Budget and Finance Committee work session. Sorry about that, I had a little brain freeze. As a reminder, everyone, our microphones are in the ceiling. So, please be— No, you don't have to look up when you talk. However, any side conversations are going to be caught by the microphone. So just please be careful because that can cause a lot of interference for people that are streaming and watching. So if you are eating or having side conversations, those will be picked up by the microphone. So please note that there's a permanent hot mic on right now, so be mindful. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and pick up where we left off, colleagues. You should've gotten a new copy of an updated wish list. We'll be working from that one. There is some overlap with some of the issues that we—some of the items that we've already discussed. We're just gonna go through item by item. If we did not discuss it last time, we'll pick up with that today. So the first item that we have on here, we did actually discuss it at our last budget wish list session, so we're not going to start with that one. So the next item that we haven't discussed yet is from Councilmember Welsh, $60,000 to create a database—to create a searchable people's database that categorizes the Metro budget by specific category like childcare, so this spending can be easily tracked year over year. And just as a reminder for anyone that was not here for our last few work sessions, y'all, when we get to the item, if the person who's recommending it is here, or someone else has done their wishes, they'll be able to speak to it. If a few people want to speak to it and speak to the value, the merits of it, if there are any questions or concerns with it, this is the time for us to kind of have that conversation to socialize the idea. But please keep in mind that we have 32 pages worth of wish list items, so we don't need to spend an hour on any one item, nowhere close to that amount of time. So if the conversation does linger on, I will wrap us up and move on to the next thing in the interest of time. So Councilmember Welsh, if you want to speak to the database?
Yeah, you know, we go through this budget process every year and we talk about—we give certain dollar amounts to each thing that we fund within Metro Government, but I don't necessarily think that the people in our community actually know where those dollars are going, what they're actually funding. And some peer cities do this and make it very easy for people to be able to go up online and look to say, "How much money are we actually allocating towards childcare?" Or maternal health, or police department, or food, and things like that. Because different departments fund different pieces of all of these things sometimes, like through health and through MNPD and all sorts of other things through the schools and whatever. And it's just—I—I feel like it's really beneficial for people to have an idea of what we actually spend towards the thing that we say are important in terms of our budget and our city, to see how many dollars are actually going towards that. Then we can see are we actually—it can look on paper like we're actually increasing something over time, but we might not actually be increasing it because money's coming out of other places. We're taking away Robin Peter to pay Paul, or just moving things around. So it just gives us a real sense of where our dollars are actually going and what we are really actually supporting with our budget dollars.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Welsh. Does anyone else want to speak on this? Councilmember Evans?
I just wanted to ask a question, if—Councilmember Welsh, if you recall any of the cities that—you know of that do it? I'd just be curious to see what the visuals of what it looks like.
I think it's New Jersey. There's actually—could I—someone in the—in the gallery?
Kate, do you know?
Kate, do you know the city?
I can get you a list. They're all a little bit different. So, New York does a pretty good job of—because they don't have the exact, like, tagging that we would want, whereas like some other cities, like I think Seattle, has like more of like a bucket system. But I can get you a list of the cities that we would think are most comparable, most what we're looking at.
Thank you, Kate. If you could send that to myself and CC Director Margaret—Margaret Darby at national.gov, and then we can give that out to the rest of the council members. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to this? And can we have someone from Finance, because this would go to the Finance Department? Is this—do you all believe that—would this be most appropriately held in Finance, or ITS, or can you all speak to that? Or what department would it be most appropriate to be in?
We would need a lot of ITS help.
It depends on when you're—whether it's for the department or for the budget process, or is it more here, because it was a budget process. Finance may be the best place for that because we do the budget process, but also we would use, you know, support from ITS to, you know, make sure the structures are there and that the external support is there as well for people to be able to engage in that. If anything, that needs to be updated or raised.
I think the vision is more so for like a year-round database that people can go to. Like, when we go to national.gov, it's just a database that lives on the website that's searchable?
For all the transparency.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so—I mean, it'll be tied into—normally it's tied into the system, financial system record. ITS does some pre-signups, speaking from our previous implementations. ITS has a lot of integration of that data, and use of that data, so we can live on the same place, but, you know, we could do it after time to our purpose, so we have some time and delays and some explanations that need to be vetted out first, so people can go back and read.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? I'm sorry, seeing none. All right, we'll go to the next item on page two. Yeah, okay, so Councilmember Benson, this looks like 9.1 million for the medical and safety supplies, for the fire department, funding for logistics, medical equipment, safety supplies, 1.2 million for eight EDI fire inspectors to keep up with the backlog that's needed, and 134,000 for Fire Safety Division for paramedic personnel. So we'll start with those three. Councilmember Benson, if you would like to speak to each of those?
Generally, I think we covered it in just due diligence and purpose statements. They're having supply chain issues, for one thing, on the supplies, and they're getting behind, and they're desperate to get the stuff back in stock so that they're able to do their job just in a normal kind of way. And, you know, Chief Harry Heflin about this, he's over a lot of this management of their equipment, so he's got a good feel for that type of stuff. And as far as the Fire Inspectors go, as everyone knows, and it's easy to admit, we're growing like a weed, and it just takes a whole lot of people to go out and inspect and keep up with all the need. Otherwise, if everybody's just waiting to see it forever, it's very difficult. Once again, due to rapid growth, paramedic personnel, as we continue to grow, we're always behind. So, we need more of those highly skilled individuals, so that when they—they run a truck—a lot of times, we're running trucks with one less individual on a run than is really the standard. And that's kind of a problem because you can't really do all the things you need to get done. And these paramedics, they're pretty close to a field doctor in the military, or an ER doctor. They can really save someone's life.
Okay, thank you. And then the other two items that you have on here, could you speak to those as well? The two on page three?
The Inner Office for Fire Marshals, we're having some—well, we just—you know, and I'll part of this again later, you know, we just settled a big lawsuit, and part of that is under the Fire Marshal's Office for Enforcement, Inspection, and, you know, I guess, Detecting the Arson Investigations, or under—overseeing those arson investigations to make sure that we get it right, so that we don't lose money making all my contributions we have. And then, these are other paramedics due to growth in the city. And as we grow and we have more trauma, because we are definitely ranking up in a very high violent crime city ranking, which I don't know if everybody knows that, but it's just kind of shocking. We—we know something's going on, but, you know, you don't know the stats, but then once you dig in and you see the stats, it's kind of shocking that we're actually ranking so high. When you do, you have a lot of gunshot shootings and things like that that you've got to deal with. Once again, you've got to have the personnel to save those lives.
Okay, so we're gonna—we're talking about requests today. We are not talking about funding sources today, but I did want to highlight all of the funding sources, our judgments and losses. And this is about $13 million in funding. The JML account maybe has 5 million in it, so it's not enough to cover maybe not even a third of those expenses, and we can't, you know, completely empty out that account. So I just wanted to lift that up. You may want to consider looking at some different funding sources for this, because this wouldn't be an available funding source. Did anyone else want to speak to any of the fire department requests that Councilmember Benson has lifted up? Councilmember Ellis, and Councilmember Staus?
Well, I did want to speak to his request. I wanted to follow up on the question that I had asked Aaron Pratt to provide in regards to which funding source we would be able to pull money from, that he was going to identify for us before we, you know, turn in our final draft of the wish list items.
Okay.
So am I to understand that it's just the 6 million in the funding and loss, or—
So JML only has about 5 million, but we're not doing funding sources today? So you could follow up with him, if you don't mind following up with him offline, so we can just kind of stay on track for the actual—
Is there another day that we're doing it?
Yeah, so we—so the process, we go through all the requests, however many days it takes to go through the request, and then we start talking about funding sources after we've talked about the request. So, we're still going through the actual request now.
Okay.
Yeah, but you could follow up with him, like, after the meeting or offline.
Okay.
Councilmember Staus?
I just want to know when we finish with the session, because I might be able to speak to the—
We—we did—we did farmer's market last week. I mean, last week.
Do you know if you were doing everything all over again?
Yeah, we're not doing everything. I love it. That's all good. Councilmember Webb?
Well, I was just gonna say, David might want to check his figures on the—I was looking, because I've seen the 134,000 for the Fire Safety Division. Division's usually more than one, and 134,000, I mean, I don't know how many employees they're wanting to put on there, but we just probably—he probably just needs to check that, and I was trying to look, see if I saw it on the thing, but it seems awful low for a division.
Okay. Thanks for flagging that. Councilmember Purpsey?
Thank you, Chair. So, with regard to these particular requests, I—I know that—I—well, I guess the—the point in the question that I have is within these funding requests, I know that with these positions, it requires particular specialized training for for paramedics. I was wondering if—if the cost of training was included in this, and if we know what the particular cost of training is, and just wanted to sort of just make sure that we're operating off of accuracy and facts, because according to MNPD's own statements, overall crime is down 8.3 percent, minor crime is down 8.5 percent, property crime is down 8.2 percent, homicides at this point in the year are down 28 percent, non-lethal gunshot injuries are down 37 percent, and carjackings have shown a reduction of 29 percent. So I think it's important that we operate off the numbers and off the facts whenever we're going towards our—our particular budget goals, because we—we are particularly constrained within what we're able to do within this budget, so I want to make sure that we're—we're doing the best for our city off of the realities that we are facing.
Thank you, Councilmember Purpsey. Councilmember Benson?
I don't dispute that some of these statistics are down marginally for our city, but we're not down like the overall US is, and we have maintained and ranked and actually—we're—
If I could interject, I don't want to opine on our crime rate right now, y'all. We're talking about fire, so let's just stick to—if we can respectfully—to—to both councilmembers, if we could just stick to what the requests are. Councilmember Benson, if I could just follow up, you say you've been speaking with Chief Heflin. Do you know if these items were in the department's wish list, or were these things that—all of them were in the wish list?
They were submitted.
Okay. I'm sorry, not wish list, the—the questionnaire. Are they all in the department questionnaire?
Well, they're on there. I'm sorry, Chair.
They are on the—
Some of them are. I—I think they're worded a little bit different, but I think they're—based on the figures that I'm looking at, I think they're pretty coincidental.
Okay. Thanks. My computer's dead, so I don't have my—my questionnaire up in front of me, so—all right, thank you. Any other additional requests or questions about—about any of those items, colleagues? Thank you, I appreciate you for offering.
I was—I was just gonna follow up on the question as to whether or not we know if the training for the positions is included in this figure that within the wish list, if we know that.
Do you happen to know that? Councilmember Benson?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
They have to pay for their own training, more or less, the fire department.
Yeah, for—yeah.
Yeah, I know, me too.
That's something we could follow up with fire about. All right, seeing no additional requests on this one, y'all, we'll go ahead and go to page six. We already discussed the Community Safety Plan at our meeting last week. Going on to page seven. We discussed these items on last week, so we can go ahead and move on. We did—we already did these. We did the mayor's office already. Okay, so we are on page 11. Yep, we did this one too, Metro Action already. Okay. And so, so that everyone is like following along, some of these items, we already covered last week, so we're not going backwards if we've already covered an item. We're just moving forward with the items we haven't addressed yet.
And that was—that was recorded, so we can go back and watch it.
Absolutely. We encourage you to go back and watch it. And also for a reminder, because I know some people just joined us, so as a reminder, the microphones are in the ceiling, so if you are having any side conversations, or if you are eating, those conversations and sounds will be picked up by the microphone, so the viewing audience will be able to hear them. So you have a hot mic on the whole time you are in this room. All right.
I have a clarification on that one.
Yes.
It was one position.
One position, okay, thank you.
On the 134,000.
Okay. That was on—I believe it was the third request possibly.
Yep.
Do we know what—
Page two, Request Three, is the one I believe Councilmember's speaking to. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Benson. All right, going on to page 11, for the Office of Family Safety. Yes, Councilwoman Staus?
So, I have a request that I put in that I was talking to you about earlier, that's in through General Services, but currently on this, we don't have a General Services. So where would you like me to be able to pop into this step? I guess it would be the first and only for General Services.
We may not get to that one today, because we will likely not get through the whole packet today, so we are just going through them as they—as they are on here, but if we finish the packet, then I'm happy to recognize you to speak to it.
Okay.
All right, page 11, for Office of Family Services. Councilmember Coopan is not here, so we'll skip that one, and we'll go to Councilmember Welsh. A grant says Safe Haven Family Shelter. If you could speak to that?
I could probably speak to most of these all in one, these different organizations, and actually based on the public hearing last night and some other things, this will probably be in my final wish list, will be different. But I feel like it's important that, given what is happening with federal funding, that we are actually funding organizations that serve on the ground here and programs on the ground here, that actually house people who are homeless. The Office of Homeless Services is actually a coordination office, and they don't actually house anyone, and I think it's very important that right now, we make sure that the organizations that do the actual housing of people have all the tools that they need, and they are going to be feeling a—he taking a huge hit, losing federal funding and grants. And so I just feel like we should be allocating the money to those organizations that work on the ground and actually get people off the streets and into the household.
Thank you so much for that. Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Webb?
Thank you. I think all these organizations are great, and I would love to give them money, and I hope we can. Just because of the process that we went through on the nonprofit working group, I just want to point out that there are two ways we can do this. We can either say, "Let's give $2 million to the Office of Family Services." If we do that, they have to go through an RFP process, and it takes longer. Or—in theory, we could say, "We want these specific organizations to do that and put it in the budget." That's just—it's just a logistics thing that we discovered. We were telling the organizations, "We put money in the budget for you," and then when they came to get their money, they discovered that their name wasn't on it, and they have to go through an RFP process, so—
So in other words, this would be by name?
If we—if—
There—there are a few ways to do it. It would either have to be by name, or it would have to be through department, but I was actually gonna recognize Mary Jo Wiggins to kind of speak to this process as well. So, if you could speak to it, also introduce yourself for the viewing audience.
Sure, and thank you to Councilwoman Allen, really, who led the subcommittee and has already kind of started to kick off this conversation. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to remind—and Mary Jo Wiggins, Finance Department. I just wanted to remind councilmembers to make sure that we are directing these nonprofits to partner with the department that will manage these grants. Those departments are the subject matter experts. They are the ones that can ensure the work that needs to be done is the work that is in the scope of work for the contract. So, Councilwoman Allen and the subcommittee that worked on nonprofits really worked to try to make sure that nonprofits knew, instead of coming to US councilmembers, it all is gonna sound really important and really necessary and really worthy, but let's make sure they're working with the departments to make sure those can actually happen. Sometimes there's good ideas that have already been tried, and there's a reason they know they can't—it won't actually work the way, or there's just a more efficient way to do it, is working with the department. So let's make sure that these nonprofits are working directly with the department, and that we're not then telling the department, "Oh, we put money in the budget, now you have to work with them." That's kind of the wrong direction. We want to make sure that the departments, who are the subject matter experts, are getting these funds to fill gaps that they know need to happen, or to increase the amount that can happen. The other thing that's really important for you all to keep in mind is, you are not supposed to approve any funding to a nonprofit that has not met all of the eligibility criteria. That's in the Metro Code, and we're now none of it happens, and we have to hold the contracts until all the eligibility requirements are met. But the biggest one that takes the longest time is an audit. So, before we're approving any funds in the budget for a nonprofit, we need to ensure that all of the—there's six primary criteria that's in Metro Code. It's actually, if you go to the hub, as part of Councilwoman Allen's group, they made it very clear, if you go to the hub and you type in, you know, "nonprofit grant," you know, you're gonna get not only the information about working with the department, but you're gonna get all of the eligibility requirements. And again, the biggest one is to make sure that if they're receiving—
Nonprofits have funders. They work with actual funders to give funding. There are times when we will supplement a nonprofit for doing a service that, you know, maybe we should be providing for our constituents, and maybe this nonprofit can provide this service better, at a, you know, better rate, more effective, more efficient. So for example, we may partner with someone like—like—I'm just—I'm not saying we're gonna do this, I'm using this as an example. So last night, we heard from neighbor to neighbor, who said, "Hey, there's a program that we could implement that will help with community safety. We could do this for $75,000." If we determine that maybe here at Metro, it would cost us $150,000 or $200,000 to do that thing, it may be advantageous for us to invest in a nonprofit who would be better at providing that service at a lower rate. But we ourselves, as Metro, we are not funders, so we should never be anybody's primary funder. We should not be anybody's only funder. We should not be—like, it—it's not a system where these nonprofits should be able to come to us like year after year after year after year and request funding. Like, that is not how we're set up as a government, that's not, you know, the—there can be arguments or in opinions on if that's the best use of taxpayer dollars, whatever the case may be. We should absolutely be providing these services, but we have to be mindful about how we are doing these through nonprofits. So, I just want to make that, you know, really clear. And if I could get a clarifying question answered, I don't see anybody here from—I don't think anybody's here from OHS, but Krista should be able to answer.
Who does the—the housing with—when—when we call like OHS, and if they put someone like in a hotel, I know we've seen Rowway Inn and different places like that, where people are being housed, what department is that under?
So, primarily, OHS holds contracts with different providers, and in particular, some of those are funded through the ARPA program, the 50 million that you all get updates on a monthly basis, and they keep a pretty good record on their website about who they contracted with and how they've done that. In other cases, we have general fund going as well to providers, and some of the funds that are proposed in the budget, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, those would be ones that they would then hold an RFP process and seek to have providers that they would engage for those programs.
Councilmember Webb, I say you first, and then Councilmember Purpsey.
I just have a clarifying question for Ginny. It says due diligence, Director Calvin, so you're saying that she's on board, we're taking these funds from her Office Homeless Services budget to fund these things?
Well, we just discussed the fact that I was gonna redirect some of the new funding towards our office, towards other things.
Okay. And then, is there a list of—this is for Mary Jo, I guess, is there a list of people that—the nonprofits that have already met the—no.
There's no such list. I mean, if—and even keep in mind, somebody could have a current contract, but if their audit report—
Ms. Matt?
—expired, so to speak, they still need to get another audit. It's not like, once you have an audit with Metro, you can just get funding here and thereafter. You have to have an updated audit.
Thank you. Councilmember Purpsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, for Ms. Wiggins as well, just a clarifying question on the audit requirement. I know that you stated that they have to have an independent CPA who does that internal —who does that audit for them. Does—the—does Metro—I guess, does Metro provider, or are nonprofits able to have the Finance Department or some other public entity do that independent audit for them? Or is that some line item that they are required to—
We would not—yeah, we would not be able to do that, it would be a conflict of interest. And again—
Thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. Is this something where—if—if there was a desire to—to do this and utilize some of these agencies that maybe have different kinds of reach than other agencies have, and can help other kinds of people and have different kind of connections, can they have like a—could that contract run through like a single, like audited? Could that grant run through like an organization that already has—is blessed, and then they could work with these partners who we know are able to do things that maybe other partners can't? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
It does, yeah. A fiscal agent, yeah.
Fiscal, yes, yes.
Mary Jo, can you speak to it, though?
Yeah, Councilman Farr is right. It's a—it's a fiscal agent relationship, and so, of—I'll say a larger, not necessarily, you know, a nonprofit that has gone through the audit process, has sound internal controls, and is willing to take on that fiscal agency relationship for another nonprofit, essentially becomes our direct recipient, and then they would subcontract with the nonprofit themselves separately than the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, can you speak to—have you spoken with anybody at the Office of Family Sa—Safety about reallocating these funds to them?
No, I didn't have time to do that kind of due diligence when this all came together.
Okay, and then, you say you had a conversation with Director Calvin. Can you speak to the conversation about—the about your conversation with Director Calvin? Like, what would be cut if this is 2 million in requests? So what are they cutting from their budget if this happens?
This would simply be money that's newly added to the budget, in the mayor's budget, and it would—it's gonna be funding primarily a lot of physicians within OHS, but I don't think they need new physicians, and she knows that I don't, because they already have 30 people. Again, they don't provide direct services, they don't do case management, and they contract out a lot for consultants and things, so it—it's just all the new money that would be given to the department, that—and that I feel is—would be better spent in terms of addressing this issue, due in other departments and other agencies that are already working on the ground in different—in different capacities.
Thank you. Ms. Wiggins?
I have a question and a box of information. Are you intending to take the funds from OHS to Office of Family Safety, or is this just an error in the header?
It's hard for me to know what—like, the departments where this went, this all—
So Office of Family Safety is Diane Lance with—
Right, right.
Okay.
Looking on the dropdown.
Okay.
I couldn't find whatever the category was.
Well, these part—these—the partners that you have listed are already partners of OHS.
Yes, but they don't get funding right now from OHS, so that's why I want those to go. Again, I didn't know—how do you say, "You take it from OHS and give it to OHS"? I think I tried that once, and it gave me some sort of error message, because the dropdown wasn't complete, so—
Okay. The other piece of information that might be helpful, you just mentioned staffing. So, OHS currently has 14, I believe, number 14 FTEs that are funded through American Rescue Plan dollars, that are working with these nonprofits. They do have contracts with these nonprofits.
Currently, on some of these, yes.
Yes, and so they have con—so, OHS has contracts with the partners that are listed on this sheet. OHS also has staff members that have been funded through the American Rescue Plan dollars to help with this case management, and those 14 FTEs are going— And those 14 FTEs are going to continue to be funded through FY26 using ARP funds. So if you don't see that in your budget, it was a budget request from OHS to continue to have that, those, well, they wanted to put those 14 FTEs in FY26 budget. Because we were able to shuffle some ARP funds and keep that out of budget, just because the budget was so tight, we've been able to do that. So just when you get to members last night, you all approved some contracts for Addiction Rights Council. The other piece is this 14 FTEs and then the third piece are some staff, some FTEs and some nonprofit funding for Office of Family Safety. Those were the three budget modifications that originally came through that were related to ARP and rather than try to find room in the FY26 budget, we actually found ways to reallocate some ARP funds. So you wouldn't necessarily know by looking at the budget that the 14 FTEs for the Office of Homeless Services are continuing into FY26.
Hold on, one, I can add you to the list, hold on one second. Councilmember Prentice, you recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Wiggins, when do the audit, when do the nonprofit audits expire?
Great question. Metro is actually pretty generous. If somebody has a 6/30 year end, that's very common for nonprofits. So let's say they're 6/30/24, like almost a year ago, that was the end of their fiscal year. Let's say they had their audit done in fall. Their audit report, so this is for their financial statements ended 6/30/24, their audit report might be October 1st of '24 saying, "These financials are good in every way." That October 1st date of audit report, we will let that go for one year before we require a new one. So that, those 6/30/24 audited financials expire on 10/1 of '25. Does that make sense?
That does make sense.
But, so if they don't have their audit, let's use the same June 30th, 2024 date, if they don't have their audit finished until February of '25, that's when they get it finished and that audit report is dated February of '25. Those same 6/30/24 audited financials are good until February of '26. We go off the audit report date.
So essentially, an audit is good for one calendar year?
Plus whatever time it took to get the audit done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Soror next, since she's on the committee, then I'll go to Councilmember Stiles and Councilmember Ellis. Councilmember Soror.
Thank you. And I wanted to say also that for organizations that are getting less than $50,000, they don't have to do an audit, they can do a review. And a review is a lesser audit and it costs less. So we were able to make that adjustment last year when we extended that from $5,000 to up to $49,999. So if an organization is getting less than $50,000, then they don't have to worry about the audit. But if they're getting more than $50,000 and the cost of audit is astronomical, it's high, then they can do the fiscal agent thing. The question that I wanted to ask Chair about, this is, Ms. Wiggins, do we know which organizations will be getting that ARP fund? One of the concerns or things that have been said to me by people in the community is that though the OHS is supposed to be contracting with some of these agencies that are doing the work on the ground, some of them are not being contracted with or they're not getting the money. So I don't know if it's because people don't know what's coming, so do we know which, any of these part of that ARP fund, do you know what's going to be?
So the only new contracts that will come out of our funds are the two that were approved last night for Hispanic Bar Association and Legal Aid Society. They're not necessarily going to be new, they're amendments.
Yes.
They're amendments to the contract. Office of Family Safety will probably review some of their contracts that are currently ARP funded, but the way the U.S. Treasury rules are right now, we can't enter into contracts for new work unless it was already the same work that was obligated by 12/31/24. So I don't know who you're referring to about, how do they not know about the contracts? At this point, there's no real application process because it can't be for new work. We can only reallocate funds to add to contracts that were already obligated by 12/31/24.
So do we know if Open Table is getting that extension to FY26, for example?
I do not know that. I don't know the date that their contract expires.
I think that would be very helpful in the sense that because I think this is coming out of folks saying that people in the community, nonprofits, doing some of this work, that OHS walked through and to make sure that those walked through. And so if there's something already coming for feeling bad, to remind, I guess some of this is...
I'll look it up, but if their current contract expires June 30/25, then I'm not aware of any. You all have two that are coming, there's one for Office of Family Safety and then the two that were...
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Soror. Councilmember Stiles, Councilmember Webb, I'll add you. Councilmember Stiles?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question, Senator.
Can you just, on that end, we couldn't hear her. Just make sure they speak up. I know that's hard to believe that we could not hear her.
So if, so when we speak, if you could project so that everybody can hear you, the question was asked about any of the organizations that are doing work with OHS, did they, are they getting any of the ARP funds? We can't allocate any money to new organizations, any of the ARP money to new organizations, but if they were previously in a contract before December 31, 2024, then the money that is left over can be reallocated to organizations that were already in contract before 12/31/24. So Soror asked if Open Table was one of those and the concern is that some of the orgs on the ground are doing this work and people in the community want to make sure that money is getting to the orgs on the ground that's doing this work and she believes that will maybe address some of the heart of Councilmember Welsh's issue. Mary Jo Wiggins does not have the date in front of her, but she's going to look up that contract and date. Did I get all that? All right, thanks. Councilmember Stiles. Question was answered, thank you. Councilmember Ellis.
Yeah, so two things. One, just for situational awareness, what time are we ending today? Do we have a hard stop?
I am trying my best to end at 5:30 if we can, 5:30, 5:45. We have a whole lot of stuff to cover and I don't want to keep people here all night, so it's kind of a balance of trying to honor the time of the council members and the staff that are here and the viewing audience, but also we have a ton of stuff to get through, so.
Got it. So just to follow up to that, is, I would just ask the council office staff, could they re-up the schedule, the working budget sessions for those that are not on the budget committee so that we can be aware?
Like resend out the dates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so my question was, just, so I just wanted to follow up, Ms. Wiggins, on the statement that you made about the 14 positions that are for Office of Homeless Safety that the funding, as I understand, you said would be from the ARPA funds? So when we had the Office of Homeless Safety there during the departmental hearings, one of the statements that Councilmember Johnston had said is that the, the ARPA fund, like, the funding for those positions creates like a cliff, right? And so those money, she said, should not be allocated for that. But am I understanding from you that those positions are already in the budget and, and the money has been designated for that already? Is it a done thing?
Second is correct. The ARPA funds are being used to continue the funding for FY26, but because it's ARPA funds, they're not in the budget. So when you look to the budget book and you see what was in the mayor's budget, you won't see 14 new positions created for Office of Homeless Services. That request will come in FY27 because these funds will be utilized fully in FY26.
Got it. And so...
So it will, and, and Councilwoman Johnston is correct, it does create a bit of a cliff.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you. So just to follow up, not meaning to cut you off because I know the terror is on me. So do, and I guess this can kind of cheapen going back to the question that I have for Mr. Pratt. Do we know how much of those ARPA funds are available before they get designated for a different use without us knowing?
There are, so as projects complete that were funded by ARP, if there are leftover funds, that's what I'm tracking. And then when budget came through, I said, "Hey, I probably can find some additional funds because we're getting little tidbits here and there and I can pull them all together and we can reallocate." And that's when we said, "How much do we have?" And that's when we pulled things out of budget. On December 15th of '24, the council approved the final ARP resolution that said, "Finance will be in charge of the reallocations." So you see them when they come to you as contracts, but if they are internal, that gets reported to the original oversight committee, but not necessarily the council. I'm happy to have that council.
Interesting.
I also brought in, Mary Jo, please correct, these aren't new things, these are continuation of things, so if no new things are being funded, these are things that have already, already previously been funded and are allowed to be funded with these dollars. So then that way we can create capacity in the budget to fund, sell with real money.
I got you. This is a little bit complex for me, so forgive me.
It is.
So, so that, that is, that, those are really good questions, Councilmember Ellis. And for anybody that's following along, that may not be quite following along, basically you don't want to use one-time money to fund something that's going to be ongoing. So that's like, you don't want to use your one-time tax return that you get in January and figure that you're going to try to pay your mortgage with it because in a couple of months it's going to run out and then you don't have a way to pay your mortgage. So when we put like FTEs or anything that's in the operating budget, that funding source has to be an ongoing funding source, it can't be one-time money. And ARP funds was one-time money. But because we had some money that was like leftover once projects were finished, they were able to kind of pool all of the leftover money together and look at what we had in the budget that was already funded previously by ARP funds and take some of that out of the budget and fund it with the one-time money because it was something that was already approved. And that would then free up some of the budget money to pay for things that couldn't be funded with ARP funds. But after this budget year, when all the ARP money is gone, if we want to keep those positions, we will then have to put them back in the operating budget.
Yeah, that I'm tracking, it's just, it's a little uneasy. I'm tracking.
Okay, cool. All right, I have, I think those, did anyone else want to speak to this before we move on? Vice Chair?
I'm sorry, Chair, where, where are we on the list? I've been trying to follow.
We are on page 11, so this is not really a request for the Office of Family Safety, but this, do you have the new list, by the way? You have the new one, okay, because we're not on the one from last week. So we're on page 11, it says Office of Family Safety, but we, Councilmember Cooper, we're going to come back to you in just one moment, but we were addressing the first four requests from Councilmember Welsh and in essence, she wants to take $2 million in new money from Office of Homeless Services. Really, it's still kind of with people that are working with Office of Homeless Services, but it wasn't a way to say, "I'm taking from Homeless Services to give to Homeless Services." So she has it listed under Family Services, but it's not really under Office of Family Services. But that, we're talking about those four requests to give money to Safe Haven, Open Table, Colby's Army and Park Center.
So are these allocations different from what they already receive from, through the Office of Homeless Services?
Councilmember Welsh.
This is directing some of the new money that is in the mayor's budget towards, for OHS to make, to get that money to actually go to all these nonprofits that are actually on the ground working, housing people and not going for more full-time employees or to expand the office, just because the work that they do is not direct service or, or case management or anything like that.
Will there be some follow-up with the Office of Homeless Services to ask them
the impact of directing funds in this way? Because I'm looking at their budget of, at a glance and I don't see their new money going to FTEs. I could, maybe that's somewhere else, but just on the list of their budget modifications, I don't, I don't see, other $5 million, I don't see it going to FTEs. So will there be some follow-up with Director Calvin to know what that impact is to the OHS budget and their plans for fiscal year '26?
Well, it would be on the council member that's making the request to do the due diligence of that follow-up and, you know, kind of, that's kind of what we're supposed to be doing here, is kind of speaking to what that due diligence process looked like. If anything is put in the substitute budget, I will also like follow up with that department head directly to, to make sure, but the, the spirit of the exercise, y'all, is to, is to make sure that council members are speaking to the departments to talk about what those effects are. Because again, I've spoken to this a little bit in Budget Committee, but I know everyone's not at every meeting. What we saw in our budget last year and what we've seen in previous budgets is council members will come with a request, and this is not directed at Councilmember Welsh, this is a very general statement, council members will come with a request and they will say, "I want to give money to this department," and this is the first time that department is hearing about it. Or they will say, they will have had a conversation with someone in passing and they'll say, "Oh yeah, I talked to that department, I worked it out," and that department head has no idea what you're talking about. Or subsequently, they will make a request to take money from a department and that department has not been informed that their, that their budget that they've, in essence, been kind of working on for months and this is the budget that they're planning on, and now that budget is going to get possibly cut and now that department head has to make provisions on what they're going to cut. We need to have that information before we put that stuff in the budget. So the, the due diligence is your, your way of being a little mini, a little budget chair czar or a little mini budget chair person and having the conversations with these departments about what the impacts of your requests will be so that you can then bring them back to the committee so that we as a committee can have a conversation about, are we willing to make that sacrifice of what we could be potentially losing if we make these changes or will we could be potentially gaining? So if you, so just going forward for the rest of the sessions, if you've not done due diligence, if you could do your due diligence before you get here, that's very helpful for the conversation so that we don't have to speculate on what can happen, we can actually speak to what is going to be cut or added. Thanks for that question, Vice Chair.
Chair Porter, I'm sorry. This, OHS increases that are in the budget were part of the Unified Housing Strategy recommendations too, so it may be worth a conversation as well with the Housing Division with Angie Hubber. I just wanted to note that there's actually two departments that were collaborating on the Unified Housing Strategy recommendations for these particular funds.
That's very helpful. So if the funds get reallocated, then in essence, we're cutting from the Unified Housing Strategy?
If they're redirected to purposes that weren't articulated in the rapid, rapid rehousing and the permanent supportive housing funding, those are, those are pretty specifically directed to those reasons.
Okay, thank you. And I see three head nods in unison from the, from the, the rest of the finance team. So thank you for that information. Councilmember Welsh, did you want to speak to your next item? And then Councilmember Cooper, your next two, excuse me, three items and then council four items, is it four items? Yeah, we'll let you finish out with your, we'll let you finish out with your next four and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Cooper.
Okay, the last, the last three are essentially part of what we were just talking about. The one in the middle there is creating the National Community Safety Plan, which is something that we heard a little bit last night.
We talked about last week, yeah.
Yeah, last weekend, last, last evening at the public hearing. And the other, the three following that are along the lines of what we were just...
Perfect. I just, I didn't see that those were other orgs, so thank you for that. Councilmember, did anyone want to add to any of this? Nope, okay, Councilmember Cooper, if you want to speak on your community outreach and mobile app?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And this maybe was supposed to go in a different place, but this was out, money allocated for the Safe Bar program. They were looking for additional funding for their app and outreach program and I know Councilman Stiles and Chair Evans were working on this as well, but this Safe Bar has been a great program in downtown and throughout the city, making sure that folks are kept safe while they're out there.
Thank you. And that actually brings us to the next item, which is the app from the Women's Caucus. So Councilwoman Stiles, would you like to speak to that?
Yes. So to Councilmember Cooper's point, Safe Bar, National Assault Center Safe Bar program, they, when they first came to us, there's an app so that when you're downtown or actually they're trying to expand anywhere throughout the city, you're able to find the establishments that are Safe Bar certified. And so this money will go to the completion of that app as well as marketing materials. We know CMA is starting this week and so they have ordered coasters already that have reference to our support as well as other sponsors that will be out of establishments.
Thank you. Does anyone want to add to that? All right, thank you so much. The next item, we're on page 12, by the way, the, the last item on page 12 is funding to hire a domestic violence disposition investigator and that's a, that is a request from the Women's Caucus. Councilwoman Stiles, would you like to speak to that?
I am going to speak lightly on it. This is also something through the Women's Caucus and actually Councilmember Gadd did a lot of the research on this and I see that you have it under another department or request. Because I have it through the Office of Family Safety.
I didn't know if you wanted me to speak to it.
Oh, can you?
Councilmember Evans.
So this is the, this is one of the things that came out of the October special called meetings on domestic violence and so there... And so there are, basically, what Davidson County is facing, other counties have solved this issue, but we have not, is that it's the honor system. Whenever there's a domestic violence situation and the person who is charged is required to relinquish their gun, basically, we just ask them, do you have access to firearms? And if they say no, then we're like, okay, we're good. But if you have any that you're supposed to dispossess, we don't really document any of that. And so Councilmember Gad went down the, the process of talking to MNPD, the DA's office, to try to figure out like, where should this live? Because it does involve guns, so of course, it requires a certain level of training. And so she was the, she spearheaded this based on her previous domestic violence work at the state level, and then also it coming up in the October meetings. And so this is the resolution that we passed on May 6th.
That was a great day. It was my birthday. She forgot. Okay, thank you for that.
It was a great day.
Would anyone else like to speak to this? I know we heard, we had some people, I think Moms Demand Action spoke to this last night as well. Councilmember Prepti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little bit of clarification, because I recall, we've been talking about dispossession as it relates to orders of protection, which are in effect for a year after they're, after they're signed by a judge, which can be spanned upon if the app hand applies for it. But are we also applying this to folks who are, who have domestic violence convictions as well? Is it sort of an all-inclusive position that, that we're wanting to initiate? Or is it particularly geared towards those order protections, I guess?
So the, the way the resolution is written, she's got four bullets in here identifying investigate prohibited persons who are out of compliance with gun disposition required by law, contact prohibited persons to notify them of their duty to dispossess themselves of firearms, assess safety risks and make referrals to MNPD, the DA's office, and the high-risk intervention panel, and connect with the TBI to learn if any prohibited persons residing in Davidson County have tried to purchase a firearm and failed the background check.
Thank you so much. Did anyone else want to add to this? All right. The next item we have is for the Office of Homeless Services from Councilmember Kimbrough, building life opportunities and options for mothers, which is Bloom. The mission of Bloom is to provide a pathway to home ownership for pregnant and recently postpartum mothers experiencing homelessness. Councilmember, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, please. It's pretty self-explanatory. Bloom, I think she's appeared at one of our bodies before. This is a physician. She's an OB-GYN at Vanderbilt, and she started this nonprofit for women who have difficult pregnancies, postpartum depression, and women also who are pregnant who are experiencing homelessness. She purchased a home, she has a nonprofit, she's purchased a home, it's out on five acres just for these women. And they teach them life skills, they help them to get housing, their own home, and to get work as well. So that's the request. Running to answer any further questions?
Well, we'll see if councilmembers have questions. Councilmember Ellis?
I just wanted to add one thing. So when we toured the Women's Domestic Violence Center, they, when they, I guess, turn out or when the women's time has expired, they refer some of those to Bloom. But Bloom is at capacity. And so I would recommend that we, we fund them this money as well, for that reason.
I have spoken with Director Calvin and received response in writing that she's amenable to this. I'm not too sorry.
Thank you.
But I didn't, I got confused. I see a lot of people put Office of Homeless Services. I didn't put that because I thought that would be like, I didn't under, is that taking money from them and then giving it back?
This is, well, so this would be giving money, so the way that you have it is taking $200,000 from judgments and losses and giving it to the Office of Homeless Services.
Okay, okay, this one, okay.
Anyone else want to speak to this? All right, thank you. The next two things, I believe we could maybe skip these, Councilmember. It's basically the same thing, it's an allocation to Room in the End.
We could skip the next, the first one, because that was just a mistake. I realized I put the wrong number and I didn't know how to edit anything. The second thing is, this is actually, Room in the End is a Metro program, and since its inception, we have not increased its allocation. And they are going to be taking a huge hit from other federal dollars and whatever, and I think we need to double the allocation. We've been giving them $450,000 since its inception, but this was a Metro. Room in the End was set up at the behest of Metro, and we've never increased the allocation that we give them to provide the services that they give. So I think that we should consider doubling their allocation. And I put in what would cost to double it at the first time, so $900,000 was what I would, more if we can do it, but definitely, we should double it, just because they're going to be losing so much money. I want to make sure that they have what they need.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tooms?
A question for that request would be, does Room in the End have a, have they requested that their money be doubled? And do they have a, a budget showing how they will spend that, those additional funds?
I spoke with Rachel Hester, and she said she would gladly take the double, the new allocation. She was more afraid that someone might pull it, because it's a small amount of money, and they can't afford to lose it. But yes, they definitely can use it in the programs that they're already doing. Just, again, because it's a Metro, it's set up, it is actually a Metro program at its inception, that we started it, so at our behest. And so they could, yeah, she, they definitely can use the money, and she could show us how they could use the money.
I would definitely want to see how the money would be used.
All right. Did anyone else want to speak to this? Councilmember Sora, then Councilmember Allen.
If, if there is opportunity to, to increase access, or maybe to talk to HHS and see what we need to do, that we know, we, we, we keep hearing about problem of homelessness, and it's keeping increasing. And this is the only place where we have, where we're putting people and revolving out. So if they have the capacity to take more people, to give them the wraparound services, to get them into permanent housing, this is what we should be doing. Otherwise, every other thing else, we can study all day, but until we're putting people in homes, we just keep having to revolve it though. And so if they have the capacity to be able to take this, and we can figure out where it comes from, I don't know where it comes from, but this is something that I will, I will support.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
I just want to clarify, Room in the End is Charlie Struggles program that he started with the peanut butter and jelly sandwich at his church. And it now has a housing component to it. And it has been really helpful to the Office of Homeless Services in terms of being a place to put things. So I, I absolutely support looking to see if we can support that more, but just wanted to clarify, it's not, it's, it's been, it's been one of those good multipliers for doing something the Metro can do well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Webb?
I did meet with the Room in the End, and what they relayed to me was that their budget of the $450 just needed to be higher just a little bit, because when the co-family shelf, when the, the co, where the shelter got overcrowded and they didn't have, have nowhere to go during the day, we sent them to the Room in the End. So that's, we support that.
Thank you so much. Did anyone else want to add to Room in the End? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to page 14. Councilmember Allen, adding more money, it's basically varsity spending plan, adding more programming to after-school and summer youth program in Metro Parks. Community centers has been shown to reduce violence and increase options for children in lower-income neighborhoods. So Councilmember Allen, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, just, you know, just to say, we, the Southern Movement Committee had a great year last year, and has demonstrated that they can use that money effectively. And I did talk to Director Odom, you know, who said she is working to increase programming at, at all the community centers, and we can certainly target those that would do that. So in line, in line with the requests that we heard so eloquently a number of times last night, you know, which is to create some productive options for youth, so that we're spending the money here as opposed to, you know, putting them in a war because they shot each other and police and stuff like that. So, you know, took it from my favorite place. But I just think it's money, I think it's money well spent, and in the end, it will save us money.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. And to be clear for everyone, this is money going to parks and recreation, not money going to the Southern Movement Committee.
So.
Or is this money going to the Southern?
I, I see their program is having four pieces to it, and I don't know necessarily if that, but again, because everybody has to work through departments, this is the department that they're programming to work through, community centers.
So, well, well then, let me ask for a clarifying question. Are you saying to give money to SMC, or are you saying to give money to parks? Because the, the varsity spending plan as it is currently has been money that is going through Metro departments. SMC has not got any money, so I just want to make sure that's really clear for everybody. So are you saying that this request is to funnel money through parks to SMC to do work? Okay. Councilmember Tooms?
Same question. What is the money being used for? What's the capacity to use it? Because we, we've given lots of money to folks in the past, and they didn't have the capacity to use it all. So that's an important question to ask, particularly since it's taxpayer dollars. So what would they use it on? Because that, that's a new request to me, for it to be directly to SMC. And then if it's going to go to parks to span parks programming, does Director Odom have the capacity in what programming?
Yeah, I can forward her, her response.
Okay. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. On the capacity question, I mean, there's like facilities capacity and then personnel capacity. And I wonder, I mean, we have, I mean, I know within schools, like we have like our paraprofessionals that are, you know, not working through a lot of the summer, like is there any potential for like a interdepartmental collaboration to, to bring some of our paras in to, to help with the personnel capacity side if we were to do some summer programming like this?
That's a great question. I would think, and this is just me putting on my, like, teacher hat and logistics hat, I would think that it's probably too late to do summer programming now, because we're like in the summer, right? So, I mean, if we're talking about like planning for, yeah, planning for next summer. I mean, there could be, some paras do work during the summer, some paras do ESY, which is an extended school year for students with disabilities. I mean, there, we could have that conversation, it would definitely need to be training for the paras, to like trauma-informed training if they were going to do that. But I think it's worth the conversation. I think it's worth the conversation. Any additional comments, questions to this? Okay. And then Councilmember Allen, just for the, the, so we all have the same information. Have you spoken with SMC about possibly receiving money for Metro?
I have gotten requests from members of SMC just to fund the plan.
Okay.
And this is one of the four pieces, the, the three pieces that they talked about last night, is the $4 million, the $4 million for the two making this is part of the $4 million.
Okay. I, I just want to be clear, because the plan that's presented is to Metro departments, so this is like a new request saying, give money to SMC. And I'm not saying, don't give money to SMC, because I think SMC is an amazing organization. I just want to know, have you talked to SMC? Like, does SMC want to receive city money? Because they may not want to. And I see you pointing to the organizing director here, Mr. Campbell Gooch. I don't know if he could make that call, or if Director Perry would need to make that call. But did you want to, did you want to, are there any thoughts on whether SMC would be interested in, in this and capable to receive it?
Well, we were, we were envisioning the same way that we have participated in Napier, where it wasn't a paid position, but we walked alongside Napier and the director of parks to make sure that the programs were expansive. So it's not that we would be getting paid, but we would be using the co-governance model, which we used to direct their parking for, to just make sure that the program is being built out in a way that makes sense as far as restoration of the, so it wouldn't be paid, it'd be voluntary, more or less.
Yeah, okay. Thank, thank you for that. I would love to envision a universe where SMC gets some money for the labor that they have done, because I've literally, like, working with them, they have spent the amount of labor and energy and work that they have done with this creation of the Office of Youth Safety, with the pilot program. I personally don't know how they've been able to do it and not be funded by it, because I know how much time I have personally invested in this. And there's three employees at a small nonprofit that have like made this their primary focus. So if there's a universe, I, I think that's an amazing thing to consider. But you want to speak again?
One more thing I wanted to clarify is that the extra money going to parks would allow them to expand programming. So the $250,000 that went to Napier allowed them to expand programming in their community. The idea is that as, as we can do more parks, more parks have to be to expand it in a way they seem to be, although we walk alongside them in the same way, as community members.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Evans?
Oh, I was just going to ask if we can ask Director Odom to send some information that had some, I mean, I don't really know what the story is on the programming side compared to the position hiring process. She's able to disseminate, Mr.?
Okay, so we'll ask Director Odom to send out some information about the Napier program, the pilot that has been in Napier.
Is that Roya Wee, or you, or Margaret Darby, or?
Okay, so she pointed to, to Councilmember Allen. I was about to say Director Allen. She, Director Darby said it's a work session, so y'all need to get to work. So thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Sora?
Quick clarification question, and since we have the director, the director to ask answering question here. I know that last time, we spoke about $250,000 also to SMC Office of Youth Safety as well. Since there's so many harms of the program, and everybody thinks it's a war to operate, if they only have $250,000, where is the best place to direct it? Is parks the place where they need it now the most? Or is it another part of what they do? If they only got $250,000 to add more to the Office of Youth Safety and the programming that it does, or the part that has to do with parks, which is $250,000 last year, which one do they think would more work in terms of how they vision the program?
I haven't thought of that, but I think you were, you were asking, Mr. Gooch, you want to, you want to speak to it? I would say either the OYS directly or parks, because I think they both play a role. Like, we just got our director of OYS, so she still has to like get that off the ground. She still has to hire individuals, but that hiring process does take time. So that means that, so we allocate, let's say, a million dollars to a department, they, they don't just hire the staff today, like there's a process, you have to write job descriptions, post-job descriptions, interview vet people, they have to put in notice in their old job. So that is all time that that money is not being spent, so that money is sitting there, and that money could be currently being spent at parks while parks is implementing their program. So I think that there's value to add and get to parks, and there's also value to add in it under the, the Office of OYS. That's just my thought without consulting with my committee that I've been working on. But Jamil, would you like to, to think on that, speak on that?
That sounds about right. If I could just add a little more to it. The idea is that as the OYS gets completely built out, then they can help parks really determine what it looks like to expand programming, and then they can talk to other departments about expanding programming as well. So, yes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Evans and then Councilmember Ellis.
I was just going to ask, like, because I know there was a lot of timing issues, and, you know, obviously, the director just getting hired, like, how much money remains, or how much had to go back into the general fund that wasn't spent?
Mr. Pratt, do you have, do you have that information of?
I don't have that information on hand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellis?
So I just wanted to clarify with Councilmember Allen, because as I was reading the documents, I understood that the money for the additional programming for the after-school would go to the NASA program, and it would allow the community centers to hire more staff and bring some of those part-time staffers up to the full-time rate and also hours specifically for that NASA program. So is this something different, or am I misunderstanding?
So I will explain my understanding, and then perhaps Director Odom will fix what I say. But my understanding is NASA is an umbrella organization that oversees a lot of other great programming things. And the community centers are Metro Parks, and Metro Parks employees often are running those. And NASA is often saying, you're a good program, we're going to include you in our thing and[1715.26] gonna include you in our thing and make sure you get money and, and do that. So, it's a collaboration, but I think it makes sense to have the funding go through parks, but I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Some of it needs to go through NASA, that's, that's fun, too.
Thank you. Did anyone else wanna add to this conversation? Okay, seeing, uh, the next item is Councilmember Benedict, who's not here, so we will skip to the next page, uh, page 15, Parks and Recreation. Just to continue on this conversation, let's go to Coopin and Welsh, and then we'll come back to you, uh, Councilmember Kimbrough. Uh, Coopin is 250,000 to expand the community center program and pilot, and then Councilmember Welsh, uh, 250,000 to create a second pilot to mirror the Napier. Uh, so Councilmember Coopin, we'll, we'll go to you first, and then Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, wanna echo what's been said before, um, I've heard, uh, great things about the Napier program. Um, when I was campaigning and continuing to be engaged with, um, shooting place housing in my neighborhood, the top thing I continue to hear is, you know, please give our kids something to do over the summer nights, weekends, after school. Um, and so I think it's a really great initiative. I appreciate the co-governance and the partnership that's being built here, um, and I think it's a great program, wanna allocate some more money to, to keep it expanding and growing.
Thank you, Councilmember Welsh.
Oh, I, ditto.
All right. Second.
My, my only, um, my only thought on this is just really making sure that Councilmember, Councilmember, Director Odom has the capacity, because when we talked about this in the work session, and I know Councilmember, uh, Welsh had brought up, uh, possibly doing a second pilot, and, uh, my interpretation of what Director Odom said, and it sounds like Councilmember Allen has talked to her, so there may have been, the conversation may have expanded beyond the, the little bit that I heard, but what I heard, uh, Director Odom to say was that, you know, she, this pilot is just kinda getting off the ground, like, you know, let them get their feet under them before we start trying to expand it. And I, I think there's a concern of, like, you don't wanna ramp up too fast, and then the program's not effective. So, we definitely want to see this growing. I would love to see this in every single community center, every single neighborhood, every single school, like, I would love to get this everywhere we can get it, because this is gonna help our kids, it's gonna reduce crime, it's gonna create opportunities, it's gonna do all of that stuff. So, it's a wonderful investment, but we also wanna be fair to them and let them expand at the capacity in which they can. So, we would just need to circle with, uh, Director, uh, Director, uh, Odom. And Councilmember Allen, since you're already talking to Director Odom about this, do you mind kinda encompassing all of that with the conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I think these are the same thing, essentially.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Coopin, did you have anything else with that before I? Okay, um, Councilmember Staus?
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm supportive of the 250,000 to expand it, cause it sounded really great last year, and if it's really going well with Napier, I think it's fantastic. But to your point, if we are not at a place where we're, we're just starting to get good data, we haven't concluded that data, then I think we should take a pause on adding any additional funding to this program. We gave a lot of money last year to varsity, we've got an executive director hired, and that seems to take forever and a day. Um, so, that's a, a great start, but before we just keep throwing money at things, let's see how things are going overall. So, if there's room for 250, I support it. If not, I, they, they got a good amount.
Did anyone else wanna add in? All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kimbrough, Cons- Conservation Assistance Fund to help provide opportunities for public recreation, environmental conservation resilience and sustainability as natural grows, and that's, uh, five million?
Well, I have something a little bit more specific now.
Okay.
Um, I'd be asking for 1.5 million.
Okay.
And it would actually be for, like, a public, I don't know if this is correct place, I'm just, let me do the best I can. A public-private, uh, partnership to acquire land that's adjacent to Beaman Park. This would be to help preserve the Highland Rim. Um, there are private donors that are willing to give about 2 million, but they would also want Metro to be a part of it to the tune of about 1.5 million. I don't know how much we really do for preservation, conservation, but, um, since I've been elected, this has been a real issue, this conservation and preservation of the Highland Rim. I know you've heard a lot about it, and I believe, uh, Council Lady Allen as well. So, that's what, I guess it kinda falls under this Conservation Assistance, but more specifically, that's the specific ask, 1.5 million. Um, it would have, need to go through parks, I assume. I'm not sure. I don't know about acquiring land. I don't know, but this is what I'm thinking, because Beaman Park is a park, but I don't know. Um, and I put judgment and losses and self-insured liability, but that might be, that may be another place maybe, uh, more appropriate for that money to come from.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else wanna speak to that? Councilmember, uh, Swor?
Uh, since it's land, would that not be a capital acquisition?
Director Darby shaking her head, yes.
Oh, what'd you say, CIB? Okay, well, okay, well, thank you.
So, who would be the best person to work with, um, Councilmember Kimbrough, or to talk to Councilmember Kimbrough offline about that?
Great question. I'm happy to.
Okay.
I, I will say this, I believe the Plan to Play update that is underway is looking at pri- priorities for parks, and I believe there are community meetings starting in the next week or two weeks for Plan to Play update. So, I, I would first off suggest that that, some of that discussion for the parks about the Plan to Play update, but if you wanna discuss about the CIB, uh, or, or anything like that, I'm, I'm happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember.
All right, um, yes.
I just wanted to add, that is correct. Uh, it's actually, we have an email in our inbox from, uh, the Parks Department that sorta outlines the, that plan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so very much. Okay, the next page is, uh, page 16, the Police Department. Um, the first request is a request from Councilmember Benton for a, uh, budget request for LPRs. Um, I think there is no surprise to anybody in this room, my position on LPR, so there's a, no chance that that's gonna make it to the substitute, so we won't discuss it today. So, if people wanna do whatever they wanna do, they can do what they wanna do, but we're not, we're not gonna do that. Um, the next item is vehicle retention from MMPD for 330,000. Councilmember, would you like to, Councilmember Benton, would you like to speak to that?
Oh, yeah, basically, they're having, once again, some supply chain issues getting their vehicles, and so they're asking for money just to extend the use of their used cars, so that they can, you know, tie them over.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Councilmember.
They need their scraps.
We'll go to Vice Chair Tooms, and then Councilmember, um, Welsh.
Is this something that can be included in 4%?
I would think that it could be.
Uh, Kristin, is this something that could be included in 4%?
The replacement vehicles can be included in 4%. We just know that they also, uh, that the proposed budget increases the number of officers, so between current replacement schedules and new additions that they need, I, I would leave it to them to prioritize, but that, that's probably, um, going to come into what we can do with our very limited 4% funds.
But potentially, it could be a 4%.
Potentially.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Tooms, and then we got Councilmember Welsh, and then we'll go to Allen, and then Ellis.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, MMPD just replaced their entire fleet with ARP funding.
We're hearing now from the back.
Ninety new vehicles they got? They complained that they were SUVs and not patrol cars?
They did receive funding for fleet, but not the entire fleet. Not even close.
How mu- how much did we replace for that?
Maybe minutes to get them done.
I thought we got 90 new, new vehicles.
Okay, so Finance is checking the numbers on that one. Um, I believe the, uh, I, I am going to serve as a bridge for information in this moment. I am not opining on whether or not this should be whatever, I'm just serving as information. My understanding is that there are not enough vehicles, and every MMPD officer does not have a vehicle, so this is, uh, I believe, repurposing some of the older vehicles so that they can continue to be used. So, there's, there's, but there's not enough vehicles for every officer to have a vehicle. Is that correct? I want y'all fact-checking me, is that correct?
There, there are not enough vehicles for every officer to have a vehicle, and there's replacements that are needed, and so I think they're trying to extend the life on things that need a replacement.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes?
There was $9 million allocated to Endont Sheriff's Office and MMPD for...
Nine million total, or like, they shared nine million?
They shared nine million among those three departments.
Okay, thank you.
More detailed.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellis?
I'm just following up on, on Councilmember Tooms' question. Can repair money be, I mean, to keep those old vehicles as opposed to buying replacement vehicles running, can repair money for existing vehicles come out of the 4% fund?
Thank you for asking. No, the actual repair, the repair money can, but if this is more about, um, fuel and, and general maintenance, it's harder for them to do that out of 4%.
Okay.
And I would turn to Finance to speak to the 4% policy in more detail, cause they're the ones that always disqualify the things I ask.
Would y'all like to speak to it?
No, that's actually correct. Um, so certain things that we track, the certain things that are available are that are applicable to 4%. Maintenance is one of those things, and sometimes we get the package deal of maintenance, and then they include other things, we exclude those things and only recognize the maintenance amount, and then allocate that amount, and then they have to consume that out of their operating budgets.
Okay. So, possibly some of this could be used for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ellis?
Uh, so I just wanted to clarify, I, I don't wanna dare try to repeat what you said, cause I can't remember. Um, but I was under the understanding from when we had the departmental hearings with Chief Drake, that he actually said that this was, in a way, like, this was creative thinking for him, in terms of the new officers that were gonna be coming out of the academy training, and they were going to be able not replace, uh, but repair some of the vehicles that are a bit older, instead of asking for money for a, a new, uh, vehicle for them. So, I don't, I don't know what's here, um, but I just wanted to get apples to apples on that.
You both replacements and additions.
So, is your question, is your question, is this 330,000 to repair or replace? Is that what the question is?
Yeah, is the, the vehicle maintenance is, is what the line item was in the, either the questionnaire or whatever document it, uh, I was looking at the mayor's recommended versus what was submitted, and it specifically had 330 for maintenance of vehicles, and then Chief Drake talked directly to that.
So, then that's, this 330 may be for maintenance of vehicles. Councilmember Benton, is this?
Because he's saving us money by doing that.
It's vehicle retention. MMPD will struggle to maintain the reliability and safety of its aging vehicle fleet, which remains in service longer due to ongoing supply chain delays. The lack of investment in critical repairs and maintenance undermines officers' ability to respond swiftly to calls, support crime reduction efforts, and maintain visibility in the community. So, that's what they're trying to spot.
So, my memory hasn't filled me. So, this here is, I, I would just encourage folks to go back and look to, listen to the departmental hearings for MMPD, uh, because it, it doesn't align with what Councilmember Benton has asked for, but I think that if, if you guys go back and hear Chief Drake make that ask, that you'll see that it's needing and it, and it's a benefit for us.
Thank you. We'll go, we'll do, uh, Vice Chair Tooms, and then Councilmember Webb since they're on committee, and then we'll do, uh, Benton, and then Ewing. Uh, Councilmember Tooms?
Just another question about funding source. Is this something that could appear in, like, the capital spending plan? Are, are there fleet requests in our CIB?
Those are heavy fleet, which are typically more like the fire trucks, things like that. Um, again, I'll look to our finance folks who put that to an accounting test. Usually, the police light fleet does not qualify for that funding source.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, uh, Vice Chair Tooms. Uh, Councilmember Webb, you're recognized.
Well, to play off of her question, what funding source does the fleet come out of for?
She said 4%.
Light fleet comes out of 4%, and we, we have had challenges funding that.
Right, yeah.
So, that's why, when we had the opportunity to use some ARPA dollars, we did, and we continue to have challenges funding. Fleet needs out of 4%. To be very clear.
And I was gonna say, this would have to be maintenance, because the last time we purchased these vehicles, they were approximately around 50 grand, so we've been getting too many with the 330.
Thank you so very much. Oh, go ahead.
Now, just to clarify, so we do, as Kristin said, purchase fleet out of the 4%, and that is limited, you know, throughout, because there's other things that need to be, you know, the 4% light, or like, actual, uh, building maintenance and stuff like that that we give to the departments, but, um, this maintenance would be to, uh, make sure that those cars, that if we retain them, they're still drivable that they're serviced through, um, to, to do services, gives them the ability to make sure that as they run on the run of R, you know, it's reliable. So, this, this, what this request is really getting to, because if they are taken off the books because they are past the lifecycle, and to retain them, they need to be maintained.
Did, did we not approve a study to look at our general services fleet and our maintenance on our buildings? And where are we at on that?
I'll, I'll, just listen on that. Uh, I think General Services has, is, uh, currently, um, analyzing that study, um, as a whole, and they're making sure that the proper components are on, on a trajectory to be implemented timeframe.
Thank you. So, uh, we're gonna go to Councilmember Benton, and then Ewing, and then Prepty?
Just quickly, uh, it goes on to say the vehicle retention program by investing in the necessary repairs and maintenance, MMPD can keep these vehicles in a safe and reliable condition. So, I think they're really just, the objective here is to just extend the older cars, so they'll have something to use instead of, while they wait for the supply chain to break.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Councilmember Ewing?
Um, first of all, uh, shouldn't this item be under General Services instead of Police Department? I know it's relating to police vehicles, but...
Uh, Mr. Pratt?
This is a proper, I'll space for that, because they own the vehicles, and they're asking for the maintenance of the vehicles, which they'll have to have the budget in their departmental budget.
I see.
Pay General Services.
Okay, even though General Services is delivering that service. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask was, did we not have in the Arts, Parks, Libraries, et cetera, committee meeting, um, we had a meeting with General Services in which they talked about, um, fleet specifically, and a piece of software that they were looking at? Telematics? Yes. Um, what they are? Okay. Um, I'd just be interested if that's going to deliver any cost savings related to, to this, um, type of budget line item.
Were you directing it to Finance?
I don't know.
Or were you just kinda? Were, are you, are you thinking out loud, are you?
The telematics will definitely make them much more efficient. Part of the challenge we have is we are so struggling with funding our fleet program that I don't know that you're gonna see cost savings, what you're gonna see is cost avoidance and more helping us kind of...
More effective timing.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Prepty?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess so, um, and, and I, I stepped out for a moment, so apologies, I kind of missed this earlier, but, um, I, as far as MMPD's fleet maintenance, my understanding is that, uh, we've got a contract with Firestone for them to be providing us with maintenance for our MMPD vehicles. Is, am I correct in that, or?
Uh, General Services has managed those contracts, and they do do some things through Firestone. They also, over the last couple of budgets, thank you to this council, have been insourcing more of those activities, so that the light, services, oil change, things like that are done, particularly through an overnight shift, through General Services fleet shop.
Okay. Um, and then my second question was, I know that we've been, uh, undergoing a process of updating our, our MMPD, uh, fleet of light vehicles, primarily replacing some of the older, um, um, sedans that they were using and providing with, um, providing them with, uh, new interceptors of, of Ford Explorers. I'm guessing, are we running into issues of being able to, cause I know that we previously, over the past, like, three years, have allocated funding for the purchase of those new Ford Explorers to replace some of that aging fleet. Um, I guess, have we completed that process of updating the, the fleet, or are we still in that process, need to allocate new, new funding for that? I guess, or where are we with, with MMPD's fleet of those Ford Explorers?
We can follow up to get you specific numbers, but no, they have not completed that, that that update, and, and the MMPD is a, is now, you know, the number of officers we have and the number of vehicles we have, as well as, these cars cover a lot of miles. We should expect that we're always gonna see a fleet need every year as they turn over. Um, and there's a system that General Services has that, you know, looks at the level of mileage and determines when the appropriate, from a safety perspective, replacement needs to occur. They can almost plan out the, those needs, but no, they have not completed the refresh that they're under right now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did anyone else wanna speak to that? Okay, um, so I want to turn this back on you all for just one moment, because I was really trying to get us out by 5:30, 5:45, it's 5:40 right now. There are about, um, three, uh, three, four, five more Police Department requests. Would you all like to collectively just finish out Police Department today, and then we could pick up? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Um the next item, uh Councilmember Benson, um funding for operational gaps to ensure MNPD has the supplies and equipment necessary to maintain readiness and effectiveness for three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh what would that money go to?
Uh they have aviation needs. They also have the SWAT team has special ammunition that they use. And you know, that might be the kind of ammunition that they're gonna have to have for protection, for covenant shooting, response, things like that. And then for their K nine, varied amount of aspects as far as treatment, veterinarian type things for the K nine.
Okay. Thank you so much. Did anyone else wanna speak to that? Councilmember uh Councilmember, I saw Prepty first and then Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just just a clarifying question as it relates to the aviation unit, do we know what those particular needs are?
So the um it says MNPD will face critical shortages in essential supplies and equipment needed to maintain operational readiness across specialized units. The inability to procure items such as aircraft, fuel, textile, ammunition, veterinary care, and other mission critical tools will hinder the effectiveness of aviation, SWAT, traffic, and animal operations. That's the information that was given. Um uh Councilmember Ellis and Councilmember Webb.
Um I I I I don't know how to what other way to say this, but then to say it is that um um I don't want us to fuck up and not fund the police department for some of the things that they've asked for uh because of the person that's petitioning for the ask and the purpose that's listed on the wish list doesn't align with what they had in the budget budget modifications. So perhaps if you can recap why Mr. Pratt prepared for us that wonderful new uh document that has the budget modifications versus what uh the departments asked for, because I found that to be very, very helpful. And it actually gave the detail of what uh the Pacific Dollar amount was was asked for. Yeah. And I'm not sure everyone knows that because it took me a little digging to actually go and find it on the council resources page, but it out of the eight hundred pages that we got in that budget document, that document that Mr. Pratt put together was like manna from heaven.
Uh so thank you, Mr. Pratt, for that. Um so what I what I just read came directly from that document.
Yes, but I'm I'm not sure if everybody knows if some people are like me, they're a couple of steps behind and they're catching up, but-
So this was the spreadsheet that uh if you came to the department hearings and there was a spreadsheet that was like maybe blue and white, this is the document that Councilmember Ellis is talking about. And basically, uh when the departments did their um requests, um uh Mr. Pratt compiled all that information and if it said mayor, that means that request was funded in the mayor's budget. And if it says submitted, that's something that they're asking for that was not funded in the mayor's budget. So you can reference that document when you are looking at your wish list items. Councilmember Webb.
I I I'm not sure, but I think one thing, the only thing that I'm I wanna support the police, I'm an avid police supporter, but aviation, okay? So and somebody might be able to correct me, but the fire department does the aviation, the SWAT, the helicopter saving and stuff or whatever, search and rescue and stuff, and it's funded through the state or federal program. So what program are we giving to the police for the aviation?
This is they asked for fuel. One of the things is-
Yeah, but I'm asking, what are they, is that for just searching for people?
For their helicopter.
They have two helicopters.
I know they have two, but what are they using that like to search for people? Okay.
In my district, they search, they have to-
Okay, got it. Not doing what the same thing-
In my district, they use the helicopter to uh find the street racers.
Yeah, that's what she just said.
And and they I wanna give them fuel for to keep doing that.
Yeah, that would be safer than-
Right, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted the clarification there, I didn't know.
And I know that the MNPD's-
Councilmember Prepty, you're recognized.
I was just gonna say, I know that the aviation uh MNPD's aviation unit sort of wears several different hats, so if there's a missing person, they work in conjunction with other agencies or if there's a situation where there's flooding and they need to help effectuate um a rescue, they can utilize that helicopter to guide the swim boats and stuff like that. So to answer that question, they-
Lot of saving in helicopters, huh?
Exactly.
All right, thank you so much. Anything else on that one, y'all? Okay, and I'm trying to move us through to under y'all's time because we're almost to the end of of this request. The next one is Councilmember Benson. It is one point eight million. Um and I was able to find that on that sheet to Councilmember Ellis's point, I was able to to find that on here. Their request was funding uh to advance MNPD's technological capabilities and ensuring that officers have access to real-time information and tools that enhance operational effectiveness in addition um in addition of supervisory and support staff at a community safety center. It will ensure the seamless delivery of intelligence and real-time data to officers in the field, reduce their response times, and increase increasing case solvability. Funding also supports the implementation of cutting-edge technology programs that empower patrol and investigative units to operate more efficiently and effectively. These investments strengthen the department's ability to adapt to the evolving demands of law enforcement and proven outcomes for both officers and the community they serve. Councilmember Benson, did you wanna add anything to that?
I don't think I can.
All right, trying to help you out there.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Did anyone want to speak to that? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to the next thing. We've already discussed this item, y'all. This is from Councilmember Gadd, but this was also um with the Women's Caucus. This was for the Domestic Violence Firearms Disposition Investigator um for that particular position, so we're we're not gonna discuss this since we've discussed it earlier. Uh the next item is the uh Councilmember Coopin. Um this is the EDU. Would you like to speak to that? The Entertainment uh Entertainment District Unit Police Force.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um so the EDU, as you've heard and gotten some communication from stakeholders, is a police unit downtown Thursday through Sunday. Um please check into the the police hearing where they uh kinda spoke about this and the previous issues where um they were pulling officers from a bunch of different precincts who were not happy with that assignment and then we were losing officers um with attrition and quality of life and things like that. So this was created, it was funded, historically using the money that is now going to the new southeast precinct, which is very exciting. Um but it's an important thing to keep going. Um it it keeps downtown safe, it keeps um the pressure off the rest of the system. It's been really helpful to have a dedicated force that knows the ins and outs, the bar managers, there's of course a lot of moving parts going on uh in the downtown space, so I think it's an important um piece to to keep going um for downtown, but again, also for the rest of the city as well.
Thank you so very much. And Councilmember Stiles has a similar request, so would you like to speak to it as well, Councilmember? The funding is just different, but you also have it in there for the Entertainment District Police.
Yes, yes. So I I'm going to concur with my colleague. I am concerned that district does work and we have a lot of complaints about what's happening downtown. I don't want it to happen at the detriment of our new precinct, that is definitely uh for sure, but I think both are needed. I think we need a new precinct and I think we need to maintain the EDU. For me and and my my question for Chief Drake is the D shift that was created um was taking the burden off of a lot of the overflow of calls in southeast where we often have thirty, twenty to thirty calls holding at any given time. And that D shift was created, it's been helping us. We have a new precinct opening in the fall, so we don't necessarily need to give, we need to make the D shift permanent if we're gonna get a new precinct in our busiest and largest precinct. Um so we can take some money out of there and give that to the entertainment district.
Thank you, Councilmember Stiles. Councilmember Ellis and then Councilmember Evans.
I'm gonna surprise uh Councilmember Coopin and say they actually support this. Uh 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 but that is because I actually read through uh some of the other budget items and the uh um Nashville Convention Center has actually a possibility of them not funding, as I understand it, Kristin, as I'm looking at you, uh their portion of um uh the officers, off-duty THP officers that they previously funded, they are on the fence about funding that this time? Is that in relation to this four point two million?
I think we got a couple programs, just found what you're talking about. One, the Convention Center Authority, this predates two or three mayors ago now, have have been funding overtime for Metro Nashville Police Department, and they will continue to fund that, we affirm that.
They are?
Yes, they are. So the if you looked at the line item and the budget request, there's almost sixteen million of overtime for special events and downtown EDU, ADI. That's that sixteen million of overtime, we've got covered, so through the Convention Center Authority, they've already agreed to fund that this year. Um the um the topic that's being discussed is the officers themselves that are sworn and dedicated to the unit, because we've always just traditionally done the overtime only with the Convention Center Authority because tourism's cyclical and there may be years where, with this happened during COVID, where they, I guess there was one year they didn't fund. And we didn't ask them to because we didn't have a have events occurring, we and we had other funding streams for safety activities during COVID um at the time. So just so you know, that is that is covered, there's two things they're funding, they're funding the overtime for police and they're also funding overtime for fire and the entertainment district too. And that substantially increased this year too. So both of those, but those are not dedicated positions, those are not dedicated to one like MNPD that has used as a unit on top of that that has been dedicated. If that if that helps pose that question. The other program you're asking about, I can't speak to, that's Nashville Downtown Partnership and that's a that's a different program and that's through-
Maybe I conflated the two. It's Nashville Downtown Partnership that's pulling out.
That has a-
That was gonna be for the Sheriff's Department?
Uh uh no, uh you mentioned THP, they they, as I understand it, they use THP, but I can't speak to their program. Um the sheriff had a mobile booking unit that the Convention Center Authority funded for one pilot year. We moved through that pilot year-
I had mixed up.
And that has come into the budget now, under the sheriff's budget, and it is funded current or supposed to be funded in the in the mayor's version of the budget. And what having it move into the general fund does is it can be a mobile booking unit used across the county in different places. When it was for the Convention Center Authority funding, it was only able to be downtown. And so when we have events like, I don't think, I don't know that they're gonna use it for that, we'll leave it to the sheriff's police discretion, but if there's a a big event up in in the upperland area or a large event in uh Steeplechase, I don't know, I'm trying to think of things that might be outside of downtown, the sheriff will be able to respond to that because it's general funded now.
Got it. Yeah, well, I'm in support of it, Jo, if that helps any.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Parker.
Thank you. And as as for Ms. Wilson, if can I pass it back? Thank you. Um the um where where are we, where can I track and account contributions that the convention authority is making or that NCVC is making to cover things like that? Like I was looking for that today and I could not find where like that is accounted for.
I'll turn to our finance colleagues, but I believe it's under Special Revenue Fund and much like our grant programs, I think we may or may not have it in there for this year, but if you look at last year's budget book and by the time they publish the final budget book, you'll see our special revenue fund that speaks to the Convention Center Authority funding.
Thank you.
That's that's correct. So as as these things start to wrap up, it's just like we do with grant funding. We don't know if it's not a signed contract, but there's any not anything there, we don't put it in the budget. So once it's signed, we do the operating budget book, sorry, budget book um around about August, September. Those that special revenue page, I don't wanna say section, seven years before that, that lists those additional revenues that we're getting uh from different various sources and the special revenue funds that are Metro Fund, that's where you'll see that special events fund that these funds come out of.
Thank you. And if I may ask, Councilwoman Coopin, um on the the EDU, I mean, has has there been any conversation with the Downtown Partnership about supporting the EDU?
Um so great question. So has um I don't know, you're you're asking from like a funding perspective, the Downtown Partnership funding, I think that's a good conversation to be having. Um I don't know, I don't know if Kristin knows offhand, um as we're kind of alluding to, there's a lot of funding um webs going on, but I don't know about the Downtown Partnership funding directly. I think that they could potentially consider, as they do with THP, hiring off-duty officers. I'm not sure if they have a mechanism to directly fund a metro position, but that's getting beyond my my understanding of the finances.
I mean, one one way that could look is like a contribution and an MOU, I think, but I I I am not really, I haven't had any conversations with them about that. I was just curious if that's something that's being discussed with kind of the the status of the EDU and the southeast precinct and the changes and everything, if that's-
I think it's a good conversation to be having to see how it all kinda comes together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh Councilmember Stiles, Ellis and Dan Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Uh I I know I'm the very last police item and I know that I just-
We'll come back to to we'll come back to that in just one moment. I wanna stick to this one because people still wanna speak on this one. Okay.
Uh I just wanted to add Sean and and I'm sorry, Council, sorry, Councilmember Parker and Councilmember Coopin, um when the lobbyist had called me in regards to supporting that central business district or whatnot, um during that conversation, he said that there was gonna be a follow-up uh memo or or email in regards to uh what the Nashville Downtown Partnership, like why they uh are possibly pulling out of funding uh the security for downtown or if they're gonna be willing to do that. And then in addition with the like the Gulch being a part of that district as well, so more info to come.
So conferences are happening, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I I had just heard from another council member and I'm looking at uh Mr. Pratt, but that there was maybe some kind of internal mechanism that this is gonna be satisfied and I don't know if that is factual information. That was-
I'm sorry, I was focusing on some, I'm sorry.
I just asked about, uh there's another council member who's not here today that shared that they thought that there was gonna be some other way outside of this substitute process that this EDU funding was gonna be satisfied. I don't know if that's real information or if that's just under discussion or-
Um so I I think Kristin was talking to that a little bit, not the EDU, but sort of the downtown district funding that's coming from CCA, uh that, you know, we haven't um received yet, but they are um identifying it to be funded in I think sixteen million dollars. Um the police will have some funding in order to make sure that that services aren't aren't disrupted downtown. Um but you know, we need to get those funds and and all the uh all the things in place to make sure. So as we continue to work with the police and you know, with our various partners, we'll understand the capacity, but as Kristin was mentioning, people, I think, there's no, that's not gonna be new F T E unless we fund this request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any anything, yes.
Convention, not not the one.
Definitely. Thank you so much. Anything else on the EDU, y'all? Anything else on the EDU? Okay, and then um uh Councilmember Stiles, right before I get ready to address you, uh I wanna just backtrack for for one second. Um LPRs is a very divisive issue and that is an issue that is likely going to lead to a debate that we are not equipped to have that debate tonight. There's no reason for us to have the debate tonight when we know that that's not gonna be included in the substitute. So it's not my intent to be dismissive of anyone's wish list items. There is a process for councilmembers to uh work to amend the substitute budget if they want to include something that is not in the chair substitute. But again, it's not my intent to be dismissive or antagonistic, but it won't make it to the substitute and I don't see a reason to open up a big debate here tonight on that. So with that being said, Councilmember Stiles, you just you said you wanted to say something, so.
Oh, yes, I, because I heard you the first time that you, you know, shut Councilmember Benton down. So I wouldn't, I don't wanna debate, I just wanna, much like you say no, I say yes, um other reasons, but I just wanted to use this moment since, could I say something else instead of LPRs?
Oh, well, we we is it on police? Because we're wrapping, we said we were gonna finish with police, so do we get-
I know, but we have to-
Are you gonna be here tomorrow? Are you gonna be here tomorrow? Are you gonna be here tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, great, we'll do it tomorrow. So so everyone, uh real quick, wish lists are due tomorrow at noon. The uh remaining work session that we'll talk about wish list items will be tomorrow at five P M. So we've made it to page twenty. So we're gonna pick up on page twenty. Councilwoman Stiles, we're gonna get your request that that wasn't in here, whatever requests are outgoing. We're gonna finish that up tomorrow, y'all. So all we got is tomorrow. And then once we go to next week, on the tenth and the eleventh, on the tenth, we have a work session, it's gonna be short because we have C I B committee meeting at five, so it's only from four to like four fifty because we have to do that committee meeting starting at five o'clock. That's when we'll start talking about funding sources and if we see that we need to continue to talk about funding sources, we'll wrap that up on the eleven. All right, any questions? Councilmember.
Will we will we start tomorrow? So like I was saying, my request is for General Services, there is no General Services. Will Marie will be printing out, because I submitted these two things last night, will there be a new list printed out so we will be able to go back and go with that?
We'll have, we should have a new list for tomorrow night's uh work session with all of the updated submissions that are due by him tomorrow.
Okay, and and one of our items is missing. Uh for the suspension, right to council?
Yeah, that I'll clarify.
We have million dollars.
So uh just clar- just clarifying real quick, everybody, tomorrow on the fifth, the session is at four P M. Tomorrow on the fifth, in this room at four P M, on the-
You just said five.
That's what she just said, it's not five, it's four. I misspoke, so that's why I wanna clarify that.
Karen needs to know that, she just told me it was five.
That's why I wanna, that's why I wanna make sure that I clarified that because apparently. Um y'all, we're still in session, please, if y'all could just hold on for thirty seconds, we are still in session. The work session tomorrow is June the fifth at four P M. And then the one on June the tenth is at four P M, but we have to stop because we have a five P M C I B committee- is at 4:00 PM, but we have to stop because we have a 5:00 PM CIB committee meeting. And then the last session is on June the 11th. All four of those sessions start at 4:00 PM. And with the, here tomorrow, the one on the 10th is probably gonna be in the chambers, because we got a committee meeting, but we'll work those details out and make sure they're sent to y'all. Meeting adjourned, thank you for your time.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.